In fact, while they're coming in, I'll say this. The city of La Porte called in Chief here about a month ago, I guess it was, McKeon, and D O, and it was an arson situation going in. And D O got a read on it and actually got a read on one of the suspects. And that person was arrested later that day. We believe in Pearland that we're going to be community outside of Pearland as well. We're going to take this and be regional. So if somebody needs help, we're going to be there. We did that in Deer Park when the tornado came through a year or so ago in sending trucks and help and relief over there. We believe that's part of our responsibility. And these guys were Johnny on it and were there helping that community solve a crime. Hopefully, justice will be served in that, hopefully soon. It never moves quick enough, but we will see that the fruit of their labor. But they do that day in and day out here when there are situations that arise. And so it's an honor to give this proclamation for Arson Awareness Week. Whereas the theme for 2024 Arson Awareness Week is protecting house of worship, fire is a weapon. And whereas according to the U.S. Fire Administration, each year from 2020 to 2022, an estimated average of 1,300 fires in places of worship were reported in the U.S. Fire Departments, resulting in an estimated annual average of seven, six, excuse me, $74.6 million in property loss. The leading cause of fires in places of worship was cooking, 33%, but intentional actions accounted for another 15%. And whereas the U.S. Fire Administration reports that each year, an estimated 267,000 fire attributed to arson, resulting in $1.4 billion in property loss and caused over 2,000 injuries and 457 deaths. And half of all arson arrests are juveniles. Think about that, juveniles. And whereas we will use the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2024, to focus on the value and contribution accelerant detection canons, D O, make to fire departments educating the community on juvenile fires and protecting house of worship. Whereas an accelerant detection canon saves time and money, there are fewer but more accurate, there are fewer but more accurate evidence samples which reduce expenditures at the lab, speeding up investigations and providing a higher conviction rate. Fire prevention and education will aid communities by giving them the confidence and knowledge of how to properly plan their emergency exit, ensure they have working smoke alarms and know two ways out of every room. There's a way out there, there's one there, and another one right there. We have one, two, three, four out in this room. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Arson Awareness Week in Pearland and urge each of our citizens to help support the efforts of local police and fire departments in prevention and preventing arson. This given under my hand and seal today, the 13th of May, 2024. And Chief McKeon, it's a pleasure to offer this up to you and your department, along with the fire department, for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor, for this proclamation. It means a lot to us. We truly, we sacrifice and dedicate what we do into catching arsonists and preventing arsonists. I couldn't do what I do without this team that you see up here with me and with the support of Chief Taylor. We truly put a lot of pride into solving these arson cases. And like Mayor said, with the juveniles we look at, we strive to prevent juvenile fire setters. So again, thank you, Mayor. And again, we couldn't do what we do without the support of administrations. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Great, folks. We're going to take a picture. Back to Mental Health Week. All right, we got our sign. All good, all good. Well, that's being a mayor sometimes. You just change directions and you'll get back to it. Trust me, there's always things you can put aside. It'll be there tomorrow. It'll be there later. So, again, this is another proclamation that I take a lot of pride and joy to actually bring. It's a little bit dark, right? Mental health is not always fun to talk about, but we want to break that stigma. We want to bring a light out to people who might need it. And so that's what this Mental Health Awareness Month, it's the whole month, is all about, is bringing awareness and really changing lives ultimately. So whereas the area that someone lives and plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health. And whereas having a safe, stable, and healthy home condition set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Mental Health Awareness Month. Look around, look within. In Pearland, and I call upon all of our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Pearland, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, given today under my hand and seal, this 13th day of May, 2024. And again, Don, it was a pleasure to do this. I want to hand this over to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't think I can say anything more than what this already says, and that is that we definitely are in this together. It is a wild ride sometimes, but access is critical regardless of where you come from. And we're all in this together, so we're thankful for this.
And if I could have Darian Neely come on up. Darian, I see you back there. Is Member Hernandez, there he is. Saw him come back in. Former member. Well, once a member, always a member. So I want Member Hernandez to help me with this, because Mr. Darian Neely. In recognition of Darian Neely, the inaugural recipient of the Keep Pearland Beautiful Golden Pear Fellowship Award, the Keep Pearland Beautiful Golden Pear Fellowship is a prestigious non-annual scholarship of $10,000 bestowed upon a Pearland student who demonstrates the absolute highest level of commitment to environmental responsibility. The title of Golden Pear Fellow recognizes not just academic achievement, but a deep dedication to advancing K P B.'s mission. The recipient becomes the standard bearer for the program, inspiring future generations of environmentally conscious leaders and acting as an ambassador for the city of Pearland's values throughout their career. Darian, this is a pleasure to offer this up and recognize you for the Golden Pear Award. You have a lot to live up to. It's the first one. Here's the thing, nobody can ever be first, except you. And so just think about that. Somebody can always come behind you, but you're always the first. And so just remember that. I know you'll do your parents proud and your school proud, and I know you'll do Pearland proud. And former Member Hernandez, would you like to offer a couple of comments from K P B.?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell everyone here that this award, as the mayor mentioned, is a non-annual award. It means that we don't give it away every single year. We only give it to a student in Pearland who is deserving. And if you are like I am, you know that there are a lot of amazing students here in Pearland. And it was so tough for us to go through and make this decision and think about, you know, who we really want to, again, set that standard. And Darian rose to the top so easily, Mayor. He is not only just an amazing academic, but he impressed upon us, really, his mission in life to inspire those around him to be better. And that's what we try to do every single day here in this city, is to inspire, as you talked earlier about how, you know, our men back there, our gentlemen in blue, do that for our neighbors. Whenever the call goes out, they don't hesitate. And I feel as though Darian embodies that same spirit. Darian said that anytime he's needed, he will answer the call, and he has shown that with K P B., and I think throughout his entire school career. We're very excited to see what he does next, and we're very happy to support his future journey.
Darian, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank, like, everybody for this recognition and the award. I'd also like to say thank you to my family, because without them, like, taking me to volunteer opportunities when I was a kid, it wouldn't be as fun as it is now. I want to thank Mr. Hernandez for taking me on his wing for the past three years and just showing me what it really means to be a volunteer.
Absolutely. Be proud of that. All right, we will call the City Council regular meeting agenda for May, excuse me, for Monday, May the 13th, 2024. We'll call it, call it to order at 6:44. Thank you for indulging. We have a lot to do tonight, a lot of ceremonial parts for tonight. So appreciate each one of you for your patience. So with that, if you would, please stand, and we're going to have, I'm going to lead us in invocation, followed by our pledges by Councilmember Tooman.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just want to come and ask you to be a part of our proceedings, to go in front of us, lead us, guide us, direct this council in the direction that you want us to grow together as a group, to grow our city, directions to move our city, and always with the thoughts on mind of you, what you do for us, as well as the thoughts of our citizens. Thank you, Father, for bringing us through yet another election season. Thank you for bringing to council those you've appointed at this point in time in these leadership positions. Father, always, always, always protect our men and women that are on the front lines helping us abroad, and then those men and women that have that Pearland uniform on, both fire and police, as well as our public work officials that are out there each and every day. And therefore, the citizens, thank them, be with them, guide them, most of all, protect them, and send them home safely at each shift. Be with us as we deliberate. May we be honoring and pleasing to you tonight. In Jesus' name I pray.
All right. Again, thank you for indulging us as we're just a few minutes late, but we'll get rolling here in just a second. Roll call, as we move forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of coral. Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we have a coral present as all members of the council are present and accounted for. With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. I believe we have several that had signed up to speak, all under general comments. So Mayor Pro Tim will present them. You'll have three minutes at the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments. You should see a clock up on the screen, so you'll be able to track your comments on time. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First up, Mr. Breck Hamrock. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, City Council, and congratulations to the new council members and to the old council members. Thank you for your service. One of the things I was going to talk about was our accessibility and transportation for the city of Pearland. That's a big area of opportunity for improvement, I see, especially, I can use just coming here for an example. Getting here, well, first of all, the weather, we all were dealing with the weather, but I can't come through the front door. I have to go through the back door because accessibility. I can't enter through the same door that everybody else is entering. The wheelchair, I have to go find it in the back. Didn't know where it was, because this is my first time coming in here, actually. So finding that, we had to drive around, in the back, then you have to go up a steep ramp. It's not really easy to roll up by yourself. So these are some, this was just a great example of, it's a building that's been here a long time, but we need to start thinking ahead. It's like, it seems like accessibility is an afterthought when we're doing development, city development, even on some of the new areas. We're still missing it. And sidewalks, the interconnects, I didn't give my address, I'm sorry. I'm at 3712 Lockheed Street, 77581. My name is Breck Hamrock. Sorry about that. I forgot to introduce myself. But just going across, I live by the post office downtown. It's not accessible to go across the street. It can't go on the sidewalks, can't get over there, and it's been that way for a long time. And it's not just people in wheelchairs, it's people that have any kind of mobility devices. It's pretty challenging, and we're in a booming city that this is something that we should be doing a better job of. We got a lot of residents that are, have family members that are disabled or that need assistance, and it's hard to get around. So this is something that I'm hoping we do a better job on as a city, and if there's anything that we can do, let's make it happen. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Correct. Thank you for your time. Lorenzo, you might get with Breck out here. I know we've got our gaps in our sidewalks that we approved by the voters here about a year ago, and I know we're going to be rolling that project out. So if we could maybe get his specific areas into the program and address with him on the timing, that would be good. So just wanted to make sure that we matched that opportunity we're here tonight. Mayor Pro Tim?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Ms. Diana Clark.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I was just asking if I could mention one other thing.
Briefly? I'll let that.
On transportation.
Mike, oh, yeah, just, Mike, real quick. Hang on one second, Diana. We'll be a little.
It was, the main reason I was coming to talk was for transportation this evening, but because of my experience getting here, it changed everything I was talking about. So transportation, I have a real, had a real challenge getting to therapy or getting to different areas of town with mobility devices, and we have a lot of people that are in special needs or need help getting to these great parks and recreation areas we have, but we can't get there. So transportation is another thing to look at.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Clark. If you give us your name and address for the record, and you've got a timer for three minutes, thank you for being here.
I'm Diana Clark. I'm from 2713 North Peach Hollow Circle, Pearland, which is over by Kroger at 288 in McCard. I want to talk about the safety of an area of Pearland, actually, it enters Pearland. It's near the McCard exit off of 288 if you're going south, and it's along the area that I've been told to call it Ivy District. And I know that's very close to the proposed area of the Lower Kirby District, which is going to be a lot of new people, parking cars. And I'm concerned about the safety. I've dreaded when they would open that area, just for safety reasons. So I'd just like to say a couple things. You come off of 288, you're going about 50, you could be going 60 if you're gaining speed on the feeder. I don't know if that's legal, but that happens, I've noticed. And as you're coming between Bass Pro Shop and Kroger, you're going down there, and there are people coming off, and then there are people that are crossing over, coming from Beltway 8 to get onto 288 to go south. And at the same time, at this present time, without anything going on in that area, because none of it's really opened yet, there are three entrances that, from a dead stop, you pull out into one of the, just really, I think, two lanes and try to gain speed real quick. There's just no access merging lanes. It's not safe. I have an elderly mom who is a very good driver, but I would not, that scares me. And if I had a beginning driver or a new person in town, or someone is, yeah, just learned to drive, it's not very safe. And I'll just say the one area I think is the worst problem is that if a wreck happens, I actually talked to a council member about this two or three times over the last year. I've written about it. I was told to write to TextDOT because it's got more than one group that's involved in that, and they never gave an answer. But at this point, I'm getting concerned, because even this last Community Impact says that there's going to be the Kirby thing, and that's a whole new group of people. But to me, the most dangerous is if there's a wreck, like the city council member who had a wreck at that very location. If you're, if there is a wreck there or any slowdown, people cannot see it coming down 288 going south because of all the Beltway 8 infrastructure. You can't see it. So you may be hitting your brake out on 288. So I'm asking, who will look at the big picture? There doesn't seem to be that. I don't know. And then another thing is, who do we, how, who do I talk to that could let me know every three or four months if this is being improved?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. 288 is a TextDOT facility. However, I think we can hook up and see, TextDOT is dedicated to safety and saving lives on the roadway. So we've got all of her contact information. I know we usually will follow up with speakers.
We'll reach out and follow up and touch base with TextDOT, make sure we get some answers.
So it's ultimately going to be TextDOT in their hands, but we want to, we want to be facilitator for that, certainly for safety of our residents. Thank you, Ms. Clark, for bringing our attention to that and coming in to speak.
All right, next up, Ellison Scholkoff. Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ellison Scholkoff. I live on 3335 Worthington Drive. Good evening. I'm a 19-year-old Pearland resident, a Dawson High School graduate, and a student at Sand Jack College. I come before you today as a person with an array of identities. I am someone's child, a student, a sibling, a friend, and most importantly, a human being. So today, I urge you to listen to my concerns the same way you would your own child, sibling, or friend. We as a society have become witness to one of the most horrific and blatantly illegal mass occupations in human history. The horrors we hear about today are not new. We have allowed Palestine to be illegally occupied for over 70 years, during which Palestinians have faced unspeakable atrocities. To understand these atrocities fully, we must first understand how and why they began. Our story begins in 1948 with the Nakba. In November 1947, following World War II and the Holocaust, the newly created United Nations approved a plan to divide Palestine into Jewish and Arab states. Against the will of the majority indigenous Palestinian-Arab population, it gave 56% of the land to the proposed Jewish state, despite the fact that Jewish people only made up about, only owned about 7% of private land in Palestine. The Nakba resulted in displacement of over 750,000 Palestinians, often expelled through force to flee from their homes through violent and aggressive means. Despite internationally protected human right to return, many of these Palestinians were never able to return back to their home. The Nakba was only the beginning of the violence and oppression the Palestinian people would face. Zionist forces would take more than 78% of historic Palestine, ethnically cleansing and destroying around 530 villages and cities, and killing around 15,000 Palestinians in a series of mass atrocities, including more than 70 massacres. Many will hear these troubling statistics and think to themselves, why should I care? So it is crucial for us to recognize the humanity of the Palestinian people. They are not statistics or headlines. They are mothers and fathers, sons and daughters, brothers and sisters. They are human beings with dreams and aspirations, just like all of us. They deserve to live in peace, security, and dignity, free from oppression and injustice. To truly stand in solidarity with the Palestinian To truly stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people, we must actively work to end the occupation, dismantle apartheid and to achieve justice and equality for all. This requires challenging injustice whenever we see it, advocating for the rights of the Palestinian people and supporting their struggle for freedom, justice and self-determination. I want to leave you all with a quote from an activist who always inspired me. "To be free is not merely to cast off one's own chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." Nelson Mandela. Thank you for your consideration and free Palestine.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Hannah Alm Gibson. You would go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record and you'll have a timer on the screen with three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Alm Gibson. I live at 3342 Worthington Drive. I'm a concerned resident of Pearland. I'm a graduate of Dawson High School and I currently attend LSU where I'm earning a dual degree in biochemistry and psychology. As we approach the end of this school year, we are congratulating our friends and family in the class of 2024 for their achievements. What we seem to forget, however, is the class of 2024 in Palestine, which no longer exists. Every university in Palestine has been damaged or completely destroyed. Around 30,000, I'm sorry, 35,000 human beings have died, over 15,000 of which were children. There is almost no one left to congratulate. Worse than that, we are expected to be okay with this, to forget about the atrocities happening every single day. And worse than that, we are witnessing the American government criminalize our ability to speak out against this barbarity, violently suppressing, I'm sorry, suppressing and demonizing the voices of protesters. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Abraham Lincoln believed that, "To sin by silence when they should protest makes cowards of men." While we recognize these men for their valiant and progressive achievements today, they were once ridiculed for their radical ideology. History has a way of vindicating those who dare to challenge the status quo. Martin Luther King Jr. and Abraham Lincoln, much like the countless radical students protest, I'm sorry, student protesters throughout history, were scorned, vilified and even deemed enemies of the state. Despite the adversity they encountered, they remained steadfast in their commitment to principles of fairness and human dignity. And because of that, we stand in awe of their courage and unwavering dedication today. We have created a new organization, Pearland for Palestine, that will follow the wisdom of these brave titans of history. We represent the people of Pearland who will not let their homes stand on the wrong side of history. At 12:00 PM on this Saturday, May 18th, we will host a rally and a Nakba remembrance ceremony to celebrate Palestinian culture and share our demands with the citizens and government of Pearland. We want to see transparency and full disclosure by the Pearland government in their business dealings with Israel-affiliated and Zionist entities. We want complete divestment from any companies that support or profit from Israel's illegal occupation. We want the Pearland government to call on our federal government to support and enforce a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Palestine. We want justice. There is liberation in liberating others and happiness in creating joy. Our fight is not over until a brighter future has been achieved for us all, our children, our neighbors, those we've never met and never will meet, friends and enemies alike. If you are interested in learning more, participating or organizing with us, please contact us through our Instagram account, Pearland for Palestine. That's a four as in the number. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for those comments. That's all we had, Mayor.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, thank you for your comments and your professionalism. Much, much appreciated. With that, we will move forward. Did we have any items to be removed from consent agenda? I didn't have any come to me, any items to be removed. All right. With that, Mr. Coza, would you present the consent agenda items A through I?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration possible action on consent agenda items A through I, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, will new business continued? Item number one, Ms. Chavaria, would you present new business one, please?
Consideration impossible action, resolution number R 2025-65, I'm sorry, R 2024-65, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a contract with the Pearland Chamber of Commerce to manage the Pearland Innovation Hub for small business assistance in Pearland. This contract will be funded by the Pearland Economic Development Corporation. And we have a brief presentation tonight on the scope of the contract and the changes planned with the Innovation Hub. So I'm going to hand it off to President of Pearland Economic Development Corporation, Matt Buchanan, to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Representative. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm just going to start us off, then I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Malone, Mr. Johnson. But as you'll remember, this is one of our 11 strategic initiatives in our Pearland Prosperity Plan, which is trying to make Pearland a community of choice for people and businesses in our region. And so the mission is to enhance Pearland's innovation, small business and entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship culture in order to create and grow businesses within the city. Provides needed support for our small businesses and entrepreneurs, creating a centralized place to connect to local and regional resources. The hallmark of the program is to offer customized coaching and technical assistance to our small businesses and entrepreneurs. And then we also try to host year-round small business events and networking opportunities. And Mr. Malone will go over some of those things here in just a moment. And obviously, entrepreneurship and small business is a key of any holistic economic development. They always talk about the three legs of economics, the stool of economic development, one's attractions, one's retention, and then the third that communities focus on is entrepreneurship and small business. And obviously, this leads to diversification, economic vitality of our community, diversify our tax base, grow our tax base and create and retain jobs. Majority of our private sector jobs in this community are in small businesses. And so these were just a few of the things that were in our Pearland Prosperity Plan that you considered and adopted a few months ago. But, you know, continue the operation of the hub at the Spacios, continue our coaching programs, increase networking opportunities and special events, connect opportunities to professional services and support retail and hospitality startups. Just a brief history, this all started back in 2019 when our Chamber of Commerce formed a committee to kind of look at how we could expand small business services in our community, went and toured some other communities to see what they did. And then in 2020, it became one of our focus areas of our Pearland Prosperity Plan. And then we went and kind of looked at what different opportunities there would be, created a business model, then did an RFQ, and then back in November 21, chose the Cannon. Cannon's been a great partner for us in this. And their, their contract would be coming up here at the end of September. And so implementation began in 21, and then we hired a navigator and had a launch event back in May. And then we've formed an advisory board to help the PDC Board oversee the hub. And then most recently, in the fall of 2023, they relocated the Spacios on Broadway Bend out at Kirby and Broadway. And then on May 22, we'll be having our second anniversary celebration. You're all welcome to attend at that Spacios that evening. And now I will turn it over to Brian and let him run through some of the things and successes that we've had since the inception of it back in May of 2022.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. The Pearland Innovation Hub, as you can see, some of the information is on the slides before you. One of the critical things that was done early on was to create an advisory board. That board is actually the one who works on developing the policies and procedures for the Innovation Hub and then also working with the management team. That board is a group of eight entrepreneurs and business people and also part of the EDC Board and staff. So that was one of the critical things that we developed right on. We launched in May of 2022. This was after, you know, the finding and hiring of a navigator. And prior to that, obviously, there was a lot of work that had to go on from the branding, creating websites, getting all the information ready to go. And you can see that brand that we continue to use today on the slide before you. So all the websites, social presence began in the marketing of it. One of the other key things was the actual application and then the awarding of a nonprofit status to the Pearland Innovation Hub. That's one of the major goals that we had to get accomplished so that we can actually receive donations in the future. And then obviously, looking at, you know, having a location to where the hub could operate, that was something else. Membership, keep in mind, this organization, the Pearland Innovation Hub, started at zero in terms of membership and has grown now to 127 members. Those members are engaged with monthly events, you know, that happen through the hub and, you know, things that spotlight those members also, as you can see on that. The other thing, obviously, one of the main programs is the coaching program. That is where technical assistance is provided to those members when they request it. So part of the initial setup was to define how coaches would be selected, what their qualifications would be, and then matching those to the potential businesses. So that was one of the key things that we have been working on. And it has been a challenge for us to do that, to find people that are willing to give up their time in that regard. The other thing, obviously, is the Houston ecosystem is a large, very large ecosystem when you come to entrepreneurship. So working with the different entrepreneurial groups, creating partnerships has been one of the things that we've looked at doing. The hub also was able, also received three grants from National League of Cities. Those are listed there and we continue to do the implementation of those. Events and competitions are one of the things that are at the heart of the Pearland Innovation Hub. We've had several pitch competitions, ideation competitions that have really been just the starters for us. And then holding things like a micro lending, micro lending vending fair for businesses to come and learn about how they can receive financing, what are their processes and steps on that. And then we continue to have regular network events. One of the ones that we have coming up is a Shark Tank for Pearland Middle School Schools in June. This is all based upon, obviously, what we're doing tonight is based on some recommendations from the Innovation Hub Advisory Board. One of the things that they noted is that we've really made good progress from, keep in mind, starting from nothing to where we are now, but really felt that we need a stronger presence in our community in terms of the actual operations of the hub. The coaching program needs to be ramped up and we need to be having more touches to businesses and more successes there in making this work. Obviously, we need to continue on doing our marketing and improving that and continue to do the growth of the membership in the program itself. Jim Johnson with the Pearland Chamber of Commerce is now going to talk a little bit about the transition process of going with the current management team to the Pearland Chamber. Jim?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, City Council and Mayor. You know, the transition, I think, is going to be the most vital part of this, of this organization as it shifts from its current operations to the Chamber of Commerce. And I think what we wanted to highlight under the management is that is, under the existing staff of the Chamber, we will support this, but we will be hiring dedicated staff related to this program to ensure that there's people that every day are living, breathing and talking, the Pearland Innovation Hub, as well as ensuring that existing people involved in the program, whether they're members or coaches, know that there's been a transition and also know who that they can contact on there. Of course, we want to adhere to the guidelines set forth by the Pearland Innovation Hub Advisory Committee and the PDC. The programs and really focused a lot on the technical assistance and, and looking at that coaching, ensuring that there's ongoing and consistent programming in Pearland related to the Pearland Innovation Hub. The idea of this program was that there are other areas that are greater ecosystem related to this, but we need more additional programs related to helping all small businesses or startups and our entrepreneurs succeed in Pearland. And so as we look at that ecosystem, that is, I think, one of the neat things about this program and the transition is that through the ecosystem, on the next slide, there we go, I was like trying to transition. But the, the key thing about this is the partners and the people that we work with, because the greater good of our businesses is not just one entity. It's knowing who the experts are on this space that we can ensure that the businesses in Pearland, those who want to grow, sustain and retain in our community, continue to have those opportunities and entrepreneurs can grow the next great business. And the last thing, I think, is one of the areas that we are really heavy focused. The Chamber, EDC have great brands. We want to see the Innovation Hub as the third leg of that stool in our community, that you know, if you're coming into Pearland, you know that the entire community, whether it's Council, the city, the EDC are there for your support and that the brain of the Pearland Innovation Hub is available and well-known throughout our community. That concludes the transition process and I'll turn it back over to the appropriate person.
So Mayor and Council, tonight, we're here before you to ask for a contract to extend it for the remainder of this year and then one full year with the Pearland Chamber of Commerce. And so we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. And I think we, we also have several members of that committee here as well as members of our EDC Board as they listen to this over the last six weeks, I guess, at the board level. And I know the Innovation Hub Board has been talking about it for some time. I, you know, personally, I think it's a good move. If this is an opportunity, we've heard for years that we don't do a whole lot, or at least the criticism, a whole lot for small business from the EDC side of things. I think we do quite a bit for small business. We don't highlight it as much. And I think this gives us an opportunity to really dig in and provide some, some support for small businesses in our community. And, you know, my concern over this and what I hope with this transition to the Chamber is that, that we can, you know, help people understand that Innovation Hub doesn't mean, you know, you got to be some brand new startup tech company or, you know, something like that. You could, you could be, you could be a brand new startup company that, that cleans businesses and houses, but you need some coaching on your business side of things to help you succeed. It could be, you know, anything along those, those lines. You could be in business for 20 years. You could be in business for five years. You could be in business for any amount of time, but you need some additional coaching. You need some additional help. It's a resource to reach out for, to be able to, we certainly want to welcome startups. Startups are, are great opportunities and there are people who know their craft, they know their, what they do, quote unquote, with the hands, they may need help on the business side of things and vice versa. And then the connecting, the dots, connections and, and networking with people that can help them get there from lenders to investors and everything in between. So I think it's an opportunity to, well, bring it in-house a little bit. I'd, I'd consider it that way, over to the Chamber. And we have a little bit more oversight, I think, on it, number one. But number two, I think that's kind of a natural place for it to fall if we're going to keep it, the program up and running. With that, I'll turn it over to Council for questions and comments.
I have a question. When you say it's going to be at the Council, I mean, at the Chamber, there's someone going to be hired though to run it. The Chamber itself is not really running it.
Correct. Councilmember Cade, we will hire, our goal is to hire 1.5 dedicated staff related to this program. There will be oversight from myself and our Vice President, Jennifer Birdy, just from a organizational structure. Our goal is to continue the leased space at Spacio, which is located on Broadway Bend. It's Pearland's amazing coworking space owned by David Grand with Franchise R, a great entrepreneur himself, so to maintain space there. But 1.5 staff, so a full-time and a part-time staff dedicated to operating this program.
So it really won't even be at the Chamber?
The Chamber will be the, the oversight organization, but staff dedicated to the Chamber won't be running the day-to-day of it. But I think one of the neat factors is that you do get Chamber support from that. You have staff that are talking, I think there's not an organization in Pearland that talks to more businesses in the Pearland Chamber. So by having staff be able to say, hey, the Chamber might not be a good fit for you right now, you need to talk to the Pearland Innovation Hub. It's just additional, that, that fourth goal, marketing and branding, an additional telling of that story in our business community.
And, but I think to note, their payroll and everything will run through the Chamber.
Yeah, they will be employees of the Chamber running the thing because it's a cost reimbursement on that end. So they will technically be W2 employees of the Chamber, but under the brand, their emails, their titles will be the Pearland Innovation Hub. They will not carry Chamber business cards.
Do we have data as, I think we asked for this before and we didn't have it yet, like data as to what the Innovation Hub has exceeded with so far? Numbers? Thank you, Brian.
Could you repeat the question? I'm just not sure.
Do we have data as to what the Innovation Hub has done so far?
Yes, ma'am. And, and that is something that we track with the, the current management agreement where we're looking at specific metrics that the advisory board approved. Each year, that's something that we look at and then we can do those measurements. Couple, some of those are when we're looking at the number of members, the number of events that are held, number of coaches that are actually online and the number of businesses completing technical assistance or coaching. So we continually monitor those. The navigator reports those to us, P E D C, and to the Innovation Hub Advisory Board at our meetings.
Are they written somewhere or they?
Yes, ma'am.
They're in your packet. If you look in your packet towards the back of the contract, exhibit C, those are all the metrics. We've actually shortened down these metrics from the original metrics. We were a little too metric-heavy, I think, when we first started this. But, you know, I would say in general that so far we've met most all the metrics, except ones probably in the coaching program, signing up coaching, but haven't done as much coaching. We probably had a little bit too ambitious of goals for the coaching program, especially out of the gate. I think they've met the events, they've met the number of members, but you can see here, all these goals that you see here, like 150 members, they were 127 members. If you go up to the tops, working with coaches, we want to have 16 over the next year and a half, working with coaches. I'd say they, I think we had in our slide earlier, they have seven. So these, but these are all the metrics that we, that we do.
These are goals or what's happened already?
These would be very similar to the goals they have now. I don't have in the packet the goals that the current person is doing. They have not met all the goals. I would, I mean, if that's the question, you know, they have not met all the goals, but they've.
I would like to know, like, how many business, businesses are they responsible for starting? I guess if there's something where you could see that.
They're not responsible for starting.
I mean, how many businesses, people have come to them and gotten help starting a business? That's.
And, and again, it's not all about starting a business. Some of it might be somebody that's been in business for years that needs to go to a different level.
For example, Councilmember Cade, the Innovation Hub does report directly back to their advisory board. They do provide a monthly update on their metrics. So I was able to pull a previous email. I know that wasn't, it sounded like it was included in the packet, but like the fiscal year 24 target for entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs and small business owners, members connected and educated about the proactive coaching. So how many people, the goal was 32 businesses would be informed about the coaching and as of, end of March, it was 34 companies had been involved in that. Now that means that they've just been contacted, they've been discussed about the coaching and you continue on, the next goal might be working with a coach. And the goal was 16 for fiscal year and they were at six at the end of the March. So that's, if those are the metrics you're looking for, they are being done, they are being tracked and reported back to the Innovation Hub Advisory Board on a monthly basis.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for answering my question.
Patel?
So I certainly hear you guys all talk about this. I've been to a couple of the E D C meetings to listen to this. And Jim, I want you to know today, I consider you a friend. So don't take this personally. I think this is a money grab. And, you know, when I look at it from a business point of view, we have sunk $700,000 into this deal. We've hired supposedly, when you did an RFP, not you, but the E D C did an RFP, the three companies in this market. We picked the best company, spent $700,000. And the reason I was told that we were not successful was our navigator, which again, I had to figure out what navigator is, is the lady that they had hired was not focused on Pearland and she kept getting the stats from Houston. And I tell you this, and the public needs to know, that we want to sign on another $400,000 for 16 months. Now let me tell you how I see this play out. We're going to spend $400,000 and in 16 months, E D C, along with you guys, will come back and we'll get told that it took long enough to find somebody, the new navigator, the person that's going to run this, and we need to extend this contract. And at the same time, in my head, I'm thinking, who is going to take this job? If they know in 16 months, they're going to be out of a job, maybe, they may be out of a job. So which experienced person would want to take this job? So it's going to take a lot longer to find somebody who is crazy enough to take it. Second, the person who would take this job would have to have significant experience from the business side. And as much as I like the chamber, nor you, nor Ms. Birdie have startup or any business experience. So you would not know how to start a business, but not only that, really, you haven't had your own business to understand the pitfalls and the ups and downs of a business to manage this. In my opinion, this is a bad move. We've already sunk $700,000. Now you're asking us to sign on a $400,000 more. This just tells me the E D C has way too much money. And I understand, can you go back to the slide with the 11 or 13 points that you guys had in the very beginning? Keep going back.
Pearland Prosperity.
Right there. I understand one of those strategic goals was this. But really, we can add, and I think a long time ago, the mayor said, we can condense this to four things. We can condense it to two things, or we can expand this to 20 things. We're just pumping money into these deals. It tells me we're looking for keeping ourselves busy. I cannot justify taxpayers to continue to fund something. And I like our community and I know there are businesses that need help, but I think we may be duplicating this. I asked a very simple question. What is the difference between the Saint Jacinto Small Business Administration and what this does? This to me does not belong anymore. It needs to stop the bleeding. This is not something we need to continue funding. I'd rather take this money and help a small business write grants, figure something new out. I always get told, oh, well, we can't do that. But if you dig deep enough, there's a different approach. But to me, I'm sorry, Jim, this is not a good taxpayer's way of spending funds.
Sheverit?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim. So I don't necessarily agree. I don't think it's a money grab. I do serve on the advisory board. Been following this contract for, for many years. The first year we were under by 139,000. The second year we were under by $33,000. We are 27 months into a 36-month contract. And the micro lending is very different from traditional lending. So I would like for Matt to talk a little bit about that, but also I would like to point out, this is 3% of the P D C budget that will go back to our small businesses that do not have an opportunity to purchase a franchise and give a plan on how to run a business. So I really think that this is important. It's, it's a opportunity for small, small business to get coaching, technical assistance and micro lending. But Matt, can you talk a little bit about traditional lending versus micro lending?
I'll let Brian talk about, because he knows more about our micro lending program than I do.
The, whatever you think of traditional financing for businesses, you're usually looking at major capital expenditures of maybe over $100,000 or more, $50,000 or more. Micro lending can be as small as $1,000. Many times entrepreneurs or small businesses are in such a state of beginning their business that they have no credit history. So you're really looking at a much narrower bandwidth in terms of those businesses being able to receive and apply for capital. What you're trying to do obviously is build them up over a period of time so where they become bankable, so that then they can go to a bank and apply for more funds. But many of these small businesses, startups are in such a state that they don't have that credit backing, so they have to do non-traditional type things. And that's really where the micro lending started in terms of looking at those different venues and methods. You know, and one of the things that we have looked at is some different entrepreneurial groups that support that, one of those being the Lit Fund, that will actually look at smaller business loans that can help a business begin the growth process, because it's not something that many of these people are accustomed to. Many times they're just like you, they're working a day job and they're doing this on the side, so it takes a lot of time. The idea behind obviously the micro lending is to have support staff and the navigator then knows who to contact. That's the key for that person that the chamber would be hiring, the navigator. They don't have to know everything about micro lending or SBA lending or marketing, but they do have to have the capability to put together the different people and get them to the right person. That's one of the key things that we feel is important with the navigator position is to be able to understand who's there and then be able to match them. That's really the key. Then there's specialists who do the micro lending, you know, getting them together. That's really the key thing. But micro lending versus traditional bank financing is totally different in terms of that. You may be lending money without any collateral at all when you're doing a micro lending. It may be really based upon that person's character and what you believe they can do versus if you're doing traditional lending, obviously you're going to have to have some sort of collateral that the bank would be acceptable with.
Before we, before we move on, either Jim or Brian, I think Mr. Patel raised a good point, and that is the potential of duplicate effort. So can, can either one of you explain the, the Small Business Development Center versus the Innovation Hub and the differences or the similarities?
Sure. In some ways, obviously, the Small Business Development Centers have a mission to work with small businesses. When you look at some of their core things that they do, it's business planning. That business planning is then geared towards getting a business financing. And typically, obviously, when you look at government programs, you're going to be looking at, at SBA 7A or S B 504 programs. Typically, you're looking at more programs that are going to be more driven towards more capital intensive uses. They do provide some counseling, but many times it may not be as specialized as the individual needs. So they have a limited scope that they're going to be able to do. What we're trying to attempt to do is bring together a cadre of different needs that may focus on specific needs of the business, whether that's marketing, whether that's, I need help with payroll, I need some accounting and assistance. There can be so many different areas where a business needs helps, but they may not be able to get those specific things through the S B D C. They may, but it's also dependent upon what counselor the S B D C has. Many of them, and I know some of them, what they specialize in, specialize in is financing. That's their whole goal. S B D C is like any other organization. They have metrics. Their metrics are how many businesses obtain financing. So that's a good thing, obviously, and we support that. But on the other end, there's businesses that need technical assistance on, how do I really do a marketing program? How do I get a better presence in terms of social marketing, those type of things? And that's really what this program can help with.
And the second question that he raised, I thought was a good one, was, you know, hiring, you know, the 1.5 people, knowing that, you know, the potential for a, a program to end in 16 months. So Jim, at the chamber, you want to address that question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Patel, that is a, a potential concern with the hiring of this position. I feel confident though, based on our relationships in our community and our ability to sell something that we do believe in a year and a half will be showing you extensive amazing metrics that have been beyond and that all of council is very supportive of the continuation of that contract, that we can bring someone on that. But that is something that we have to be upfront with them on, that they're an employee through September 30th, 2025 at the, the earliest, but we hope that we'll be seeing them later on that end. And that is a, a potential risk for who we hire, but the part of the transition is to dedicate an interim navigator. Our Vice President, Jennifer Birdie, who has been informed in this, is in a position to take on that. So as much as there might be a, a gap in hiring a full-time dedicated staff, we will have somebody full-time dedicated come June 1st for that program in operation. And, and to piggyback off what Brian said to the S B D C question, I think that's where, what Pearland has done with the navigator is so unique, that the S B D C is a great resource for many businesses and that would be the ideal place to send many businesses. But not, it's not the answer to every business. And there's not one entity in Pearland right now or an individual dedicated to navigating that process. It could be a private company. It could be a private entity. It could be the score. It could be something through the University of Houston, Clear Lake at Pearland, Alvin Community College. There are so many great resources out there and there's not one person right now, if this was not to be continued, that's dedicated to that. And I'll, and I'll use an example, Mayor, is two years ago, through this same Pearland Prosperity Plan, workforce development was a dedicated priority. And through that, a dedicated staff member, most our car was hired, as well as the chamber brought on somebody with workforce background. And in two years, the progress that our community has made in workforce has been substantial. You have programs where we're helping people get employed at Lonza, work in Pearland, it has over 3,000 people dedicated to that program. And those are just two specific program. So when you bring somebody in that's dedicated, that has the skill sets, you see success and you move the needle in our community even better. The move, the needle's moving in the right direction. We just want to see it keep moving in a faster way as well.
Okay. Wanted to open it back up, but I want, I thought those were two good comments that I wanted them to, to address. Other questions or comments?
So there's a few things that really bother me here. So our, our Pearland representative, Ms. Guidry, she's still employed?
She is an employee of the Canon, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and is there, and she's not here and is there any representatives from the Canon here?
No, sir.
So I've been to two meetings and if they're managing this properly and they're doing everything that they should be and if, and I know that they're going to continue on, I feel like they should be here. That's one thing that bothers me. Secondly, we talked about the, the metrics. And so now we're two years down the road, two years into this, and we're backing the metrics up on what we think is achievable. If, if we're moving forward, the metrics should be equal or, or if, or greater because we have a head start now. I don't understand why we'd be backing the metrics up.
The metrics before you are actually for this fiscal year, so we have not reduced those. Those were what the Innovation Hub Advisory Board provided to the Canon for this, for this year. So we haven't reduced those in that regard. I think what Matt was talking about, we had so many metrics early on, I think it didn't allow us to focus on the key ones. So we have really tried to focus on the key events, the key things that we need to be going forward to make sure that the program is successful, because that's really what we want to have, is a successful program, not something that has 50 pages of metrics, but looking at the key indicators is really the key indicator in the long run will be the business outcomes. And I think that's really what you're getting to, is how are we impacting and helping those businesses in the future? Are we making them grow? Or are we make them, helping them to create jobs or create a better company? That's the key, what we want to look at doing. Those metrics that are in here, I think are part of that story. We have to have, to do a better job in terms of getting that coaching program going to really get that to be effective.
So the metrics that were, that are presented tonight, they're from the advisory board?
Yes, sir. The advisory board looks at all the metrics in terms of the ongoing operations and made a review of last year's events and last year's performance and then set those metrics for this current year.
I'll just say I'm a fan of the idea of this. I think it feels good. I think it's, it is helping our small business and just not a fan of the price tag and what it's cost. Well, really, it's not even that. It's just the results that we've had. I think moving forward, I think it's a lot of pressure. Jim, are you, you sure you're up to that because?
Not, I'm not going to tell you, no. Absolutely.
So in a year from now, I want to be able to play this video.
Yeah, no, and I think, Councilmember Two-Min, I think that is where we're at a year from now, to be able to come back and say, we absolutely hit the metrics, or to come to council and said, even with our best efforts, which I don't feel like this will be to say, we were unable to hit that. And that's a decision I would have to make on that. And we're, we're honest and upfront about that, that we are going to put our best foot forward, that we are going to. And we're, we're honest and upfront about that, that we are going to put our best foot forward, that we are going to achieve and exceed those metrics. And are up for that. And that's why we have, are in the position to hire dedicated staff to this because we are supporting it and want to see this continue. And I think it is a, an amount of money, and we'll remind council that it is a cost reimbursement. Unless we spend it and it's dedicated and approved by the EDC, it's not a full blank check for four hundred thousand plus dollars. We have to spend it for dedicated programs that will be placed directly back into our business community in our town and help our startups.
Well, I think you've done a great job with the chamber and I believe in you. I believe in the Advisory Committee and I also believe in the Pearland Economic Development Corporation and their board and the decisions that they make. So I'm going to put my faith in all three of those and we'll talk in a year.
Yes, we will.
Mayor Protim?
Yeah, just ditto what Chad said. I think there's a lot of good people involved on the Advisory Board and at the Chamber. And I don't know that I'll have much rope after the sixteen months if we're not seeing some good results. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for taking it on. I know you didn't wake up saying, hmm, I should take on something new, but.
No, and I would say that's a Mayor Protim Carbone. It's, it's because we truly believe in this. You know, the chamber does get a management fee associated with this, but additional staff time and stuff. This is an opportunity for us to support something that makes a really good sense for our community. And that's where, speaking on behalf of our board, that's where we are. We believe that if we don't take this on, it will go away in our community. And we want to see it continue and thrive because we believe in our businesses and believe in the initiative.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted a little clarification, Trent, Matt. This is EDC money that we're spending, not money coming out of our general fund, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And as such, that doesn't hit the, the property owners within the city limits. It's driven from sales tax, correct?
That's correct. It's sales tax.
So that could be somebody within our jurisdiction of the city, or it could be somebody coming through, buying something here and paying sales tax in the city, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As far as Mr. Johnson, the oversight of it. Is there going to be reporting back to the chamber from this individual that we hire? How, what's going to be the connection between the chamber and the individual that we?
They will be an employee of the chamber. They will have regular conversations with the, the staff leadership of the chamber. And ensure that they're meeting the metrics set forth. So you have my oversight of this individual staff member to ensure that they're meeting the Innovation Hub metrics. This staff member will provide updates to the Board of Directors of the Chamber, but that is just more informational only. Because of the way that this is structured between the Advisory Board and the EDC Board, they will be setting the metrics for this individual and the hub. Ultimately, you're getting staff dedicated at the Chamber of Commerce to run the Innovation Hub. But you also have indirect staff support of myself, our Vice President. Our Director of Finance will be doing the books behind the scenes and that's where the management fee comes in. So for that fee, you're getting some, some great leaders and great business people behind the scenes ensuring that it's successful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Last call for questions, Mr. Tumman?
Sorry, I got caught up and I did have one more question. What is the, our current obligation? So if this, if this doesn't go by council tonight, what, what are we obligated to with our current contract?
The current contract would actually be terminated on June thirtieth of this year with the Cannon.
And then so, sorry, so June thirtieth is when the chamber would officially take over?
We have actually scheduled with this agreement, they would actually begin June first. So there is a little bit of overlap. We want to make sure that, because we are looking at transition of lots of information and a lot of data points. And make sure that the Cannon staff is working with the chamber to get all that information transferred. All the information on social media, the websites and all those different things. We want to make sure that those are transitioned smoothly and so that we don't miss anything in terms of the actual operations. Plus, we also have some events that will be occurring in June. We want those to continue forward. The Shark Tank is something that is, you know, that we're looking at continuing. So we're not stopping the operations just for the transition itself.
Matt, can you pull up the budget, please?
I don't have a slide on the budget. I don't know if Josh can pull up the packet. It's the last, I think, second to last page in the budget.
While they're pulling up the budget, I believe the management fee is, is it a fixed amount or is it a percentage?
It's fixed.
So I, I just want to try to understand this in my head. For the four months, we're going to pay them fifteen thousand dollars. For the twelve months, we're going to pay them forty five thousand dollars. Assuming if the cost of salaries and wages, assuming on June first, they're not going to spend forty five thousand dollars. We're still going to pay them fifteen thousand dollars, even though they're not really managing anybody.
They will be managing the programs of the Innovation Hub. They will have interim staff that will be dedicating the transition and the actual ongoing. Our plan is for not their, not for it to stop, but for it to continue on. So the chamber will have, until that navigator is hired, will have dedicated staff on this chamber staff. They will actually be doing the implementation, working with the Innovation Hub staff, EDC staff to make sure that those are ongoing. We still have lots of things to get done in terms of this transition period while they hire someone. So they still have a lot of management responsibilities going forward and at the initial steps.
So this forty five thousand dollars, assuming let's say it takes us, I don't know, Labor Day weekend to find somebody. We're still going to pay the salary because you're going to allocate part of this salary, Jim, from your staff. Because they're going to be continuing this work, correct? I mean, how would you, how, how are you going to pay the salary to your staff if they're dedicated to the hub?
So you're, you're afraid, you're asking, I'm making sure I understand the question, that if we have a dedicated staff member to the hub.
Until we find the 1.5?
Will we be prorating their salaries and wages back to the EDC?
To the hub?
To the, well, to the, we'd have to invoice to the EDC through the hub.
Exactly right.
If they're a full-time dedicated staff member and they're dedicated, absolutely they would be.
Okay, so you're going to take one of your staff until we find somebody to put them over there?
Correct.
Okay. And there, what's the salary expectation for your navigator that you budgeted?
The, the proposed job posting right now has a range of sixty to seventy five thousand dollars a year. But Councilman Patel, we have a max of a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars there. If we find the, the perfect staff member within that area, we'll be great. We'll be able to, that is our max budget that we are authorized to spend on that.
I'm going to be very honest with you, Jim. For eighty thousand dollars, you're not going to find somebody. Not with the experience that you're talking about. Let's be very honest with you. So I think currently you pay a hundred thousand dollars?
I, I don't know.
Matt, what's the current cost for the navigator?
It's about a hundred and eight thousand.
And you're going to go bring this in-house and go forty thousand dollars lower?
The, the job will be posted based on commit to with experience. And so we'll have a salary range on there, but we'll be able to negotiate with the individual to see where we need to be at the end of the day to find the right staff member dedicated to the program.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Last call for questions, comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Chaviria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Oh.
Member Tumman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
No.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes by to.
All right. Thank you for that and good luck to the chamber. As mentioned, hopefully we're here a year from now or a little bit more than a year from now. We've exceeded metrics and we've got a great, great thing going. And I want to thank the members of the, of the advisory team as well that are here tonight. You're working this. And my hope and prayers, we get a lot of help for some small businesses and some good coaching. So more to come. With that, we'll move to new business number two. Mayor Protim Carbone, would you present it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R twenty twenty four dash eighty, so moved.
Second. We have a motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is part of our overall recapitalization of the Pearland Naterium. Specifically, this item awards a contract for construction services to replace the existing dehumidification, air conditioning and the boiler system in the naterium. Which has reached the end of its useful life. If you recall, in September of twenty twenty three, we ordered the new equipment, which had a very long lead time for this work. That equipment is now scheduled and expected to arrive in August. So this contract actually prepares the building, removes the old equipment and prepares the building for installation. And includes installation of the new equipment when it arrives. So with that, we recommend award to American Mechanical Services in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy four thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars and forty four cents. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open it up to council for questions, comments, concerns.
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. So is this going to be funded through cash general fund?
Yes, I believe when we ended our agreement with Pearland, Pearland ISD. They, they provided about three and a half million dollars as part of the conclusion of that agreement and that relationship. Now they operate basically as a tenant in the building and so we're using the, the cash on hand for, for this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Trent, you said they're using it as a tenant in this project. Are we, do we have an update on their fees for the pool usage that they're doing? Do we go up on their fees? How is that working now?
So I'll, I'll toss it over to Carrie, but you know, we, they went into, under the current or the fees we had at the time, but maybe Carrie can give us the details on that.
So when we awarded the facility use agreement with PISD, the fees were based off of their historical use, their average use over the last, I think, two years prior to us entering into that agreement. And the fees were based off of the current fee structure. If we get to the point where we update our fees for naterium usage, then there's a notification process towards the end of their contract. That they'll have opportunity to adjust to those fees and then we would implement those fees at the beginning of the new contract.
So when's the last time we've adjusted those fees, Carrie?
The last time that we have, there have been some various fee updates, but an across-the-board update hasn't happened in several years. We revisited that a couple of years ago when we did a cost recovery workshop for the Recreation Center and Naterium with our city council. Our recommendation at that point was to allow us to, this was coming right out of the pandemic where we had lost a lot of our members. So our goal was, was to bring that business back and to get our membership levels up to where they were historically. And we have since achieved that. So this year, our staff are working on a market analysis to see, one, what the market will support. And then also comparing all of the other facilities that are similar to ours to make sure our fees are in line with that market. And then we plan to come back to council during the next budget process, not, not FY twenty five, but the next budget process with some changes to those, to those fees.
Okay, thank you. Question. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, is there anybody from American Mechanical Services here? Would you step to the podium? Would you step to the podium, please?
Yeah, go ahead and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here.
My name is Brian Kissel. My address is fifty one eleven Francis, seven seven five eight one.
Thank you for being here. My, my question is when we get into this work, as far as we remove what's there and, and install the, the new system. About what type of downtime are we going to be looking at, at the naterium?
We had this conversation a couple of weeks back. We're really looking at on the delivery, if everything hits as August eleventh. What we've been told from Carrier, who is the manufacturer that was chosen. We will be in there working prior to equipment arriving. And then we have another entity that will be working in the pool area, doing some, some renovations to the pool. But we will be working outside, creating the pads, doing everything. It's not going to take us that long. We really can't give you a clear-cut shot. We've been told when we did this that the overall scope of the project was two hundred and ten days. And I hate to tell you that, but we don't know when the equipment is actually going to be here until it is in a yard, right? Until it's in a crane yard.
Right, which I'm not trying to hold you to anything. I'm just looking at, we're going to have users of this.
So I think we said in our meeting that we were looking at maybe thirty to forty five days tops. But I think it's going to be a lot less than that because we have some contingencies in place that we put in, in perspective. If we need to get air in there before the equipment is set, we have that built into the.
All right. So you're saying approximately a month it will be down?
I, I would.
Give or take, give or take.
Give or take a month.
Yeah.
Member Coza, as was alluded to, we will, we do have a separate contract that'll be on the next council agenda. That was in this past Thursday packet. That's part of the overall scope of the, the recapitalization. That does the pool replastering, the bulkhead and some, and the, in the filtration system and the, the, the chemical system in there as well. So I, I don't know if Carrie wants to add some more to what that, we're trying to get these two schedules to coincide to minimize the overall downtime. And maybe Carrie can provide some more details as well.
Sure, absolutely. There's been a lot of coordination between both contractors. Several parts of both projects, there will require downtime. So for example, the plaster has, has to have a certain amount of time to cure. The, the filtration systems that we're replacing, the concrete that goes into filling in the large pits that we have that provide the current filtration system. Also have to have a long time to cure. And then we have to make sure that both contractors are working, that they're not working on top of each other, that things are happening. That we're all following the right schedule to where we can maximize that window. Right now, we're looking at a start date of July first. And then if all things go according to plan, the estimated timeframe for reopening is September the twenty second. That is a very realistic timeframe. There's potential that it could go a little bit longer than that. But more than likely, we'll end, we'll have swimmers back in the water before that time.
Okay. And when, as far as the school district, when, when do they utilize it?
The school district really starts kicking off their program, the beginning of August for their water polo program. We have been working with the school district as well as all of our other facility users to help find them additional space. So many of our users are going to be going to Alvin ISD pools and sharing space there during this time. We're still having conversations with them right now about making sure that all of their needs are met.
So we are working with, that's what my concern was, what we're looking at with the different users.
Ideally, if we could have started this project sooner, it would have had less impact on most of our users. But unfortunately, we're at the mercy of those really large, the chillers and the dehumidification units and the long lead time with that. We even looked at postponing the project to see if we could start it later in the year. But the storage cost of those units, if they came in, in order for us to store them is, so far exceeds the amount of revenue or the impact that we would have for that closure. We know it's not ideal, but this is the best time in coordinating with our contractors and all of our users that we can get this finished. And then, like I said, just working closely with them to try to find them additional space to make sure that their programs continue during this time.
Okay. My concern was we're, that we're working with them, they're notified and, and their understanding of where we're at and what we're doing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions, follow-up?
Just for clarification, I think I heard you say it, but I don't see it in here. You're going to take the systems down in July, anticipating equipment coming in in August?
No, we're not taking any systems down until our equipment is sitting in the, in the yard. We're not taking anything down.
How long will the HVAC system be inoperable in the naterium?
Right now, we, we have one compressor that is working out there, so it could go out on you today, right? So you could have no air until those arrive. Right now, what we're doing is we're trying to get it installed within thirty days. We have a contingency to pull air in. There's some things that have to be done on the coordination with the other contractor to make sure that dust isn't in, in the ventilation and stuff like that. We don't want to clean it twice. We don't want, we want to come in and do this project with that.
I guess what I'm getting at is you said it again there, you have a contingency. What is that contingency?
So the contingency is, is having a generator and a backup AC unit to be able to create the, the environment to get, to dehumidify the pool, right?
Is that built into your estimate now?
That is built into my estimate.
Thank you.
Question? Last call?
Last thing, since you're up there, y'all are going to recover the R twenty two. Who gets that?
Who wants it?
It's not cheap. I'll take it. I think it'd be illegal, but I just want to make sure somebody's accounting for it.
So yes, we will pull the gas off of the system. We, we weigh it. We tell you guys what it is. The thing is, is most of the time from an equipment that's sitting over ten years, it's, you can't clean it and put it back out. R twenty two is, is going away, right? They, you can see it skyrocketing price, but you can't get.
They, you can see it skyrocketing price, but you can't get it anywhere, right? So the federal government is really pushing us to turn it in and get rid of it, recycle it in the way that it needs to be recycled. And that's what we do. And that's built into, to our proposal, is to dispose of all refrigerants and things like that.
So there's no value there?
No. I mean, there isn't really a value to it because by the time you clean it and you do everything that needs to be done to it, you've spent more money on it.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Deal. Moving forward, new business number three. Mr. Byram, would you present that, please?
Consideration impossible action, first reading of ordinance number 1494-5, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of an ordinance or an amendment to our speed limit ordinance. And what it does is it updates the speed limit on two of our roadways based on two recent speed studies that have been conducted along Shadow Creek Parkway and McCard. Same corridor, different name, each side of 288. What it does is it'll lower the speed limit to 45 miles an hour between 521 and Trinity Bay on Shadow Creek Parkway, and then lower it to 40 between Trinity Bay and 288. And then it also establishes the speed limits on the new segments of McCard that were opened this past year between Cullen and McCaw, and establishes that at 45 miles an hour like the rest of that corridor east of, east of Country Place. And so we recommend approval of the updated speed limit ordinance to establish those new speed limits. Thank you.
All right. Open it up for questions, comments from council? Seeing no.
Just a comment, some of those max speeds were interesting. 95 miles an hour on McCard. I got Tuman's attention. Was that you?
It might have been. That's why we go with 85th percentile and not the.
Yes, is this an internal study, or is this just a study that you, from Tech Dot? I guess I'm just trying to understand the study.
So Shadow Creek Parkway is also FM 2234, so that's a Tech Dot roadway. So Tech Dot conducted the study along Shadow Creek Parkway. And then we, our engineering department, went through the process of doing the study on the part that's McCard, that's a local roadway. So use the same methodology, you know, tracking speeds and volumes and looking at the 85th percentile, and then establishing the speed limit based on that, based on the requirements that we have to follow to set those speed limits.
Thank you.
Member Coza?
This is more just kind of curiosity. When we have a road like McCard, have Magnolia, have Bailey, that have speed limits that vacillate up and down, were Magnolia and Bailey also studied the same way to come up with speed limits?
Yes, sir. So I think where, where they, at least on Magnolia, I think the main places it vacillates is there where we've got a curve that causes you to need to lower the speed limit through that segment. And then, of course, when it gets west of our jurisdiction into the ETJ, that's county-controlled as far as the speed limit where it's 35. And similarly, along Bailey, I think most of our segment is 45.
So the study only does the city part? It doesn't, we don't work with the county as far as trying to have a holistic view of it? Is that what?
We've, you know, had those conversations, and I know there have been requests for the county to do a speed study on those areas, and you know, thus far, you know, they've chose to leave those speed limits where they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, follow-up? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward to new business number four. Ms. Cade, would you present that, please?
Consideration impossible action, first reading of ordinance number 1502-1, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Yes, Mayor, council members, thank you. Just, this is a follow-up item on a recent communication with the council regarding this issue, and it's a very simple, minor change to the city's ordinance. The change is designed to treat restaurants the same regardless of whether they're located near a private school or a public school. And so that's what this change does. It made two additions, two words that were added to the ordinance to effect that change. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those questions. Just a reminder, this only applies to restaurants, no other establishments.
Open it up for questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Can I ask one thing? Darren, so all this, all of these words, that's the whole change, is just public and private schools?
Yes, I provided two copies. One was a redline version, and then one was a clean version. The redline, you'll see that I added the change, "public" or. So once that added, that effectuated the change there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward, number five. Mr. Tuman, you present that, please?
Consideration impossible action, resolution number R2024-83, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the council's 2023 retreat, council elected to conduct an annual review of the city council rules and order of business as part of our trusted government strategic priority. So before you, it's available to be reviewed for any changes, but the recommended change that's built into the item tonight is to move the consent agenda and items removed from the consent agenda in front of the public hearing portion of the agenda, so that when the nights when we have heavy public hearings that are quite lengthy, we're able to dispense of those items earlier in the agenda.
Yeah, many times, some of those consent items are consultants working for us, and our bills are running. So this will allow us to dispense of that business and move it on, and even cut our own meter off, so that'll be good. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. There's no matters to be, that were removed from the consent agenda, there's no other business. We'll move now to mayor council issues for city council discussion, council discussions regarding a staff member for the city council. I'll start this off and kick it to Member Patel. This is an item he has to be placed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So I think during the budget meeting, we had a short discussion on this item, and I was told by city that we needed a charter review to have a staff member that would be dedicated to city council. And, you know, talking to some of the city council members, I find that at times it is overwhelming. There is a lot of information, and certainly, there's a lot of things as a city council member, at least I would like to accomplish while my tenant, attorney at city hall. And I find it challenging at times to get information, or I guess it's life that you put things on burner and you'll say, I'll get back to it. And so what I would ask city council members to consider, if, you know, it fits upon them and they find it helpful to maybe fund a position in the next budget, I would understand that they would have to be under the city manager until we do a charter review to pull that position out of it, to have a secretary specifically assigned to council members, and to be able to go to them and ask for information or do research, or to get information from city, and kind of put a package together of things that, you know, you want to accomplish. And I'll tell you where this started. While I got on city council, one of the things I saw was I wanted a change in the ordinance on the hotel. We had a discussion on it. I felt that council was in favor of this understanding of what we want to do in the UDC. And then I was told, well, it'll be done during UDC rewrite. Now, that's going to take three years. I might not even be here. And I don't think it's right. I think it's only fair if a council member has an item, and if council members agree that, hey, this is a good idea, we don't need to wait for UDC rewrite. I think we should have the opportunity to put this up front, have staff or dedicated person research this, and bring it to us, and let us make a change. Why is government have to be so slow in change? I'm sorry, I'm not used to it. The tree ordinance, it was very important to Jeff Berry. I know maybe it was a political stunt, but it is a good idea. And why are we waiting for UDC rewrite? And I tried to read the tree ordinance myself, and I couldn't understand it. And so I think these are ideas, you know, when I sit on this council, I say, what have I accomplished in one year? To be honest, nothing. You guys may have. I haven't. And so part of the problem I see is, my life is very busy. I have a full-time job. I have a family, just like you guys. And it is hard. And I've spoken to a couple of city council members, and they all agree, it is very hard to kind of keep up with all the information you're given on Thursday at 5:00, try and prepare on Monday. And so to me, I would like to ask that we've, we're funding $400,000 for all these other things. I'm sure in our budget, we can find enough money to find somebody who's truly dedicated to us and to help us process this faster, get the information we need. And at the same time, we're paying Trent a lot of money. He doesn't need directions from seven different council members and a mayor, right? And Trent does a good job. I'm not saying he doesn't. But he's too expensive of a guy to email to say, hey, I don't understand this, give me a call, or hey, can you go pull this research up? And sometimes I feel like he's probably getting those seven directions from seven different council members, and he's more focused on getting us what we need instead of focusing on what we're actually paying him for. So I would ask this council today to poll, to see if they're interested in this. If they're not understandable, if they're able to manage this, maybe I'm just the wrong guy, right? But I certainly feel like this is something that'll benefit all of us.
Open up for discussion? Member Chavilla?
Thank you, Mayor. So definitely, it's a balancing act, I have to say that. But I would be interested in exploring, is this a PTE? Is this an FTE? You know, how would we budget that? What does this position look like? Is it a chief of staff that reports only directly to city council? Are there other cities out there that currently have these type, this position, and maybe look at some of those best examples or best practices? So I'm willing to explore that to see what that looks like.
Any other? Member Coza?
So Darren, Trent, I don't know which one. Member Patel said that in order to do this, we would need to have a change in the charter. When is our next charter review?
The next charter review will be appointed in January 2025. That charter review will serve for approximately six months. Would make recommendations to council later in 2025. Then ultimately, those items would be presented to the voters in May of 2026.
Okay, so we're looking at approximately two years, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Today's date, to be able to hire somebody. I'm just trying to understand.
That answers directly to the city council, correct?
Correct, correct. That's what I was just trying to get an understanding of what we're looking at. So with that being said, just, so Member Patel, I don't know if he knew this or not. I knew you said that it would take a charter amendment. I didn't know if you knew the timeline. I didn't either until I just asked that question. So we're looking at two years. All right. And as far as that goes, we changed the charter. There's no issue having somebody report directly to council, just be a fourth person that would do it, and we'd have fine funds from the general fund to go forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's been the longest-serving one up here. Right now, we've got to review and manage three staff. I guess I would, I would ask or recommend that whatever we need, I mean, I go to Trent, and I sure hope, and I would assume he's not spending time, well, I mean, I've seen email threads where he's pushed, he's delegating it down and then reviewing a response before it comes back up. I don't know that I want extra staff that I've got to, I've got to manage. I've got enough in my other businesses. And so I guess I would, I would say, what are we not, what do we feel we're not getting either timely or the info? And kind of lean into that and give staff more clear direction there. Because I don't know that I want another person that's going to have eight bosses that we then have to manage and kind of work through. I'd rather just have Trent, Trent, I want A, B, and C, and go that route. I guess that's kind of what I'm thinking. And in terms of bringing stuff forward, just like tonight, that's the power we have as council. And I think even in the rules, if it's going to be a onerous, I think it's 30 minutes or more, then, you know, staff will push back and say, hey, if that's a 10-hour research project, then let's go to council and make sure there's a consensus for staff to spend that time, which I think is great because you could have two fringe people up here that have staff wasting their time discussing a range of items.
We have had that.
Yeah, we've been there before. And so I think it's incumbent of ourselves to kind of police how staff's spending their time. So I don't know.
Any other questions? Were you reaching, Chad?
Okay. I want to address a couple of things. One, I think on both of the issues at hand, the hotel as well as the tree ordinance, what I heard amongst those discussions, one was, okay, I think we're open to some of these suggested changes. We want to do that in connection with the UDC rewrite. And I, to your point, we could fast-track it, but the council, there was a consensus of council that said, let's do that through the UDC rewrite. I heard that in both situations, that council preferred to, yeah, let's address it during the rewrite, which is what's been happening. And so my question's on an additional person. I see that growing bureaucracy because we're going to hire somebody, they're going to work directly for us. You or any member of the council is going to email this person or reach out to them and say, I need some information on X, Y, and Z. Where are they going to get it? They're going to go through the same staff to get the same information that we have a city manager that is going to, when you send Trent an email, I'd like to have information or understand this, to Member Carbone's point, it's going to go to the appropriate staff to, here's the research, or here's the answer, and it comes back through. We're going to hire somebody to do the same exact thing. That's the way I see this, is a duplication of effort. And we were talking about that, you know, and spending $400,000 with the Innovation Hub. So I think, I think we'll see that. And then secondly, this person gets competing interest amongst council members. I want you to research this. How do they prioritize it? What if there's one that says yes, and people say no? How does that work? There's a lot of open-ended, you know, questions that I just see it as a duplication of effort. And again, I mentioned before, if we need to add an additional staff member under Trent for help with research and those types of things, it, there is a lot of information and help, getting help to understand and know, you know, the various aspects of what we're voting on or what we're looking at, or an agreement and those types of things,
Having somebody to, to walk through and give you some bullet points, I think is a, is a good thing. The question is, is that enough? To, I think, member Chavarria's point, you know, is there, are there cities out there? I'd be, I'd be interested to know cities our size. I mean, you can go to the, because you can go to the city of Houston and that's a full-time job and they have a staff, you know, of one or two people, however many, that work directly for each one of those council members. And I think there's 16 council members. You can imagine council on their staff, much, 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 much larger city than, than what we're talking about. But it'd be interesting to know in the, in the Dallas-Foot Worth area, Austin area and here, you know, is, is that normal? Do you see that? And if so, some of the best practices, I think those would be some interesting questions to note. But the real question is, if it goes through the charter review, is this council going to put it in front of the voters to change it? But if you're not, then why go through that? If you are, I mean, we can, we can do that outside of the charter review. We can instruct the charter review when it comes out, we're going to put this on the, you know, for people to vote. So that would be, we have that ability. We have the ability to put something. We also have the ability, if the charter review says one thing, we can take it off. We have that ability. So Trent, you got any?
Sure, so Mayor, just one thing to kind of follow up on there is that, you know, in our form of government, which is the council manager form of government, different than city of Houston, strong mayor form of government, it would be highly unusual to see that type of additional person that, that works directly for the council like that. Because as, as you stated, they, they would, you know, work through our staff or they would have to come work through our staff for, for that work. And, you know, we establish what we do by, you know, the, the council strategic priorities, the goals that are set for myself and consensus of the council as to where we move and what directions we move in. And we've got enough on our plate, way more than enough on our plate to, to spend the time on those priorities, you know, and that's, that's why some things do get set aside when they're not a priority for the council. And we'll, we'll get to those things if they become a priority to the council or when, when they're due time. But, you know, that's, that's why some things get prioritized as opposed to immediate attention. And I think if there was, if there was something along those lines, they would have to come through our staff to work on those things. And the direction for me is we've got our priorities to work on if we don't really have the time to go spend on things that, that the council as a body and as a whole has not established as my goals or goals of the city.
And I think it's important that, you know, we do, we do set our, our priorities as a council to, to, you know, give the staff, this is the priorities that we want to move. And, and that happens in February. We usually vote on that sometime in April, just like we did this year. And things can change. There can be something come up, hey, we want to, not so much pivot, we, there's something that's happening and we want to, we want to address that, which we have the ability as council, bring something, put it on the agenda, discuss it, vote it and move it forward. We have that ability and we're not saying taking that away either. But there may be something, like we've talked about homestead tax exemption, you know, it's like, it always comes up at budget. It always comes up in the last second. And if you're going to have that discussion, have that discussion in the, in the strategic priority timeframe, have it. So it's talked through, it's walked through, it's given direction. Unfortunately, I've asked for that multiple times and it, it doesn't get mentioned in any of our strategic priority retreats. So, you know, but then those same people who want it don't come to the retreat and then they want it at budget time to, you know, use as a campaign ploy later. But, but again, we, those are, those are things where, you know, we, we can change and do those things along the way. I see ultimately this could be a person that's divisive and bringing divisiveness within the staff. I work for the council only, I don't work for you. I don't, the, the parameters around it would have to be very, very, very careful how we do that if, if approved. I could see it setting up for some, some real consternation throughout.
Remember, Cade, you were reaching for your.
The only thing I was going to say is you mentioned something about them having to email Trent as well, but if they were in the building, it would be easier for them to reach Trent immediately, whereas we do have to email Trent because we don't work in the building. And if, that's, that was my.
Do you not have Trent's cell number?
I do, but anyway, I'm not going to comment on that today. I.
I missed her call today.
And so he declined my call today. So.
I didn't decline.
Fair enough.
And I always take your calls.
Fair enough.
So I, I just, I, there, there are times when I, I do wish, there, I feel bad, I mean, Trent's got a lot of people he has to answer to. I mean, he does have, you know, Victor and Ron, but they have their own people they have to answer to. And that's, I mean, that's a lot on Trent's plate. And if, and I have a feeling some of those are slightly demanding and it might.
I, I just don't see where it takes anything off my plate because anything they're doing, they're going to have to work with myself and my staff to do those. And if they're working, you know, on an individual council members, what they want research on or something like that, and it's not a consensus initiative or, or part of our strategic priorities or part of my goals, then it's taking that time away from our staff to do those things that are important to the overall body.
I'd like to have somebody help me get into the Thursday packet every week. I mean, that's.
Call Dan.
Yeah, call Dan.
So I know the topic at hand here, but we've tiptoed on a few things here. And, and one thing, Mayor, that you said is in regards to the tree ordinance, it was council's appetite to take that on in the UDC, but there's three new council members here and there may be a, a new appetite. I know I would be willing to dig into that if, if.
Right. But at the, at the time, that was, that was what was said. So it hasn't been brought up, put on the agenda. Do we want to have that discussion? Do we want to do something faster? Do we want to do something with the UDC? So I'm, I'm putting in context the, that council wanted to do something. Why, why aren't we doing it now? Why are we waiting on the UDC? Because that's what the consensus of council said is, is all I'm, I'm getting at. Council has the prerogative, just like this, putting something on the agenda, make a request, get a second and put it on the agenda. And, and any elected official has that opportunity to do that. So, and, and nobody's just, you know, trying to dissuade somebody from doing that. We have the ability to do that. And I've, I've told people, I said, I might not agree with something, but I'm going to let you put it on the agenda and have the discussion. That's what we're all here for. And I, I'm a, I'm a big believer in having the discussion. I might actually hear something or somebody that's disagreeing, might hear something that goes, wow, I haven't thought of it from that perspective. Let's have a deeper discussion about that. You might actually change someone's mind. I think that's good. That's what discussion and having at the end of the day, civil discourse is about, where you, you actually talk about ideas and you come up with something at the end that goes, wow, I changed my mind or I thought something differently.
So Mayor, when you were talking about the council's ability to, to direct the charter review, you made a comment that we can say this or say that to add takeaway. We still have follow the process and it'd be two years, correct?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
So I just, I want to make sure that it didn't infer.
No, not, not inferring that. I'm just saying, you know, if you want to dictate that, we want this to be voted on or they go through their process and council goes, nope, we're not going to put that one on the, you know, council has that.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to clarify that so that we understood that no matter which way we went, it would still be a two-year process.
Good point, good point. Last, you want to follow up? Last round, all right?
One, one more thing and no offense to the current sitting mayor, but if we have an extra staff, the mayor's office is occupied, I mean, you're up here all the time. And so it's going to be, you know, I, I would assume that position will report to council and the mayor. And so it's going to give the mayor a, a personal secretary. And I don't know, again, not, not, not to you, but just in general, I don't want to add another head count that, that if, if we're asking for things, they're having to figure out, okay, do I want to listen to one or two council or am I going to listen to the mayor? And I don't know. If that's where we head, I'm sure we can hash, we can figure all that stuff out.
Just, just so you know, clear, Tony, my request was for a chief of staff for the seven council members. Yeah, it was not for the eight of us.
Okay. So I'm left out of that. Interesting. I'm going to lobby against it. No, it's all good. It's all good. Light-hearted. It's good conversation because I think it shows that we've grown as a city. We've grown in responsibility. We've grown in agendas, the number of items that are coming, you know, in front of us and knowing and understanding. And as you grow as a city, it's just that much more difficult to navigate it. And I will say this, and I've told this to everybody that's a business owner up here, as a business owner, the speed at which we move is slower. It's meant to be slower. It's, it's a process to protect you because if you just ram things, you know, down, that can be viewed negatively. At the same time, things can linger. But having the opportunity to, to watch something go through a process and have something come out at the other end can be good. And we've got members that have had that opportunity to put something on and watch it through fruition. So it doesn't always move at the same speed that you were used to, but, you know. But at the end of the day, I guess the question is, do we have direction on this? Or are we, the staff have direction? Because I, I don't know, I mean, what I think I heard was, do we put something in front of the budget? I mean, we have a budget process coming up, you know, soon. And is it, do we put a direction to staff to add something into the budget to, to do that? And then again, what happens if a charter member fails? Is that person out of a job or do we keep them? How does that work?
I, I would certainly like to poll the council members to see what their opinion is. I, I would like to put it in this budget. And then when the charter review happens, if we can transfer them to have a fourth employee of the council, I think that's the right move as the city grows and the demands for taxpayers are more. I think it's hard. We're not paid full-time. We have a full-time job. And I think it's, you know, end of the day, I look at this as a voluntary. And you know, I mean, I'm happy to give you back this $750 to fund this. Happy to do it, you know? I think any one of us will. And so, you know, I think for, I hate using this word, but mental health and just the amount of stress some of us may be under and some of us may not be, I think it's a good, good move for, for us and the future council members to understand that, hey, you do have somebody who can assist you in certain things. And we talk about that our city's constantly growing and the needs are more, yet we have not made a change for ourself.
I hear one that's in favor of it.
I myself wouldn't be for it until we got closer to the two-year time period, just because to sit there and put funds available for two years, I think is a waste of time and effort for that time period.
I would be in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it.
So I think we would need to understand where the gaps are now that we need to fulfill. And then that would need to be weighed against all the other pressures we have within the budget, you know, whether it be additional police officers or other highly needed positions.
And, and what are we?
What are we missing?
What are we missing? So I, and I think that's where I was, I was going to head with, when, when I ask staff for something or research on something or address, I've got a, an issue from a citizen or whatever and I, and I forward. So I'll just tell you how I do that. And I, I send it to Trent, I send it to the two ACMs, deputy, deputy city manager, assistant city manager and whatever staff that I know it's going to go to from a, is it something in police, is it something in fires, is it something in code, is it something in community development, is it, you know, something in, in public works? So everybody kind of knows, here's where it's coming from. And Trent doesn't necessarily have to go one click to there. There's always more information back on that side with me out of it to get to the, you know, what it is. Usually it's, I've gotten an inquiry from somebody and I want to know the behind the scenes. What's, what do we already know about, you know, before we get it? And so it might be a day too. Sometimes it's a week, sometimes it's longer. It just depends on what it is before the information is, is back because it's, it just depends on the issue. And so that's how I choose to make those, make those requests rather than just sending it to Trent and, and, and the city manager's office. Because I know there's another step involved where he has to send that out. So to kind of take that reliever, always copy, you know, Megan and Leslie on it as well. So there's somebody kind of bulldogging what's going on, you know, behind the scenes. I, it'd be interesting to know what exactly is being missed and, and, and what the ultimate achievement is in hiring this person.
Well, I'm happy to, you, you asked a question, so I'm happy to answer that question for you, Mayor. I, I think part of the problem is you have an office here, like I remember Carbone said, your pool may be a lot harder or faster than ours. I don't have an office here, nor do I want one here. I think, member Carbone has been here quite a long time. He probably knows where all the skeletons are buried and he can probably get information faster. But Chacoza is obviously very involved. So I am not trying to say that I'm not getting the information, it's the speed. I'll give you an example. We had some issues on the west side of town where Dr. Moon, if you know, he's a dentist, he's my dentist. He said to me, Rishi, when are you going to get those barriers pushed back? You remember what I'm talking about? On 288 coming down south.
We immediately requested text dot to do that work.
Hold on, hold on.
It was text dot schedule.
Hold on. So I emailed Trent and then I had to follow back up on an email, right? He did email me saying, hey, text dot is going to get to it or we're going to request it to text dot. Couple of weeks went by and I just kind of emailed him back like, hey, what's, what's up with this? And then the following week, it finally got done, got done. That's just an example. I'll give you another example. I think it is different when you ask staff to do a research on something that is important to you, but it may not be important to them. And I've had conversations where I feel like, hey, this is important to me and I want the information, but if it's not important to them or they say, hey, it's not direction of the staff or, or council, your issue is not that. And you said it, two, two council members can go on and you say, if it's not going to spend 10, and I get that, that's very important to have efficiency. But the issue may be important to me where I want to learn about it. And if it's not being researched correctly, where I can make a presentation, then it's not fair. I'm not doing my constituents any favor. If I just say, well, forget it today because I can't get the staff, I can't get enough council members to get all, and I don't have the time to spend 10 hours to go research it. All this is trying to do is to help council be more efficient and to push things faster. And you were right, Mayor, maybe government's not for everybody, right? Like I am not used to inefficiency. I like things to move fast. And I don't know, I just feel sometimes things don't move fast.
I would caution you, fast isn't always efficient.
Fast is not always efficient, but it does, you can't have results that just pending out there, right?
Very true. But I would hope, I would hope no one on this council would hold any of our staff members accountable to the speed at which text.
That was just an example. But I think lack of communication was what frustrating, right? Like to say, hey, where are we with this? Right? I had to follow back up to say, hey, what's up? And that's the frustration.
And I, and I understand what Mr. Patel is saying. When I ask for something, I always have, I have to follow back up, always, almost always. And it may be five days, a week later. It's very rare that someone follows up with me. I always have to follow back up. And I mean, do I, do I need to get Tony to, to send in my request or Joseph to, in order to get things done fast? I mean, that doesn't seem fair. You know? You know, I should be able to get my things done also.
And I also will say, like, in the rules, in the rules, if, if staff looks at that and says, hey, this is going to take 10 hours to research. That's where this needs to come back here to get a consensus of council before we spend staff time doing that. And again, I, I think that's important that it, it does protect the taxpayers' money. That are we, are we being efficient with it? Not only doing the jobs that they have, but also doing the research or doing, you know, the investigation or whatever the case may be. I mean, we had a member one day that he asked in the police department, I want like five years of every call on, you know, certain type of crime. And it's like, it's going to take us two months to do that, to do that query. And I mean, and the pushback, it was like, we, we'll get you the information, but you understand how many man-hours that's going to take? And so, and again, to your, to your points, uh, it'd be interesting to know, uh, specifics, not your.
No, obviously not. I would be happy to forward you some of my specifics.
So we can, we can see where some of those are. Because again, if there's gaps in that, uh, there's gaps. I mean, I get it. And I think that's what staff wants to be better at, at closing those gaps. We should have enough staff members to cat, close those gaps without hiring another FD. Mr. Cozumbe?
So I'm not speaking on behalf of Mr. Carbone, uh, but there's an inference being made that maybe him and I get preferential treatment. That's untrue. There are requests that I send to Trent. Some take days, some take hours, some takes weeks. I put a, my little tickler list together and say, here's what I need to do. Here's what I follow up with. I don't expect everything to be two seconds. But at the end of the day, if there's any inference being made that we're getting special treatment, that's untrue.
Same thing with me.
I wasn't saying that. I was just saying that to be funny. I'm sorry. It's that, is how it came across.
And the same with me. I, I ask questions and I ask for backup. Sometimes I get it in hours. Sometimes it's days. Sometimes it's weeks. It just depends on what it is. I gave a, I give an example. I, uh, something, Text Dot's doing a statewide transportation update plan. And, uh, that information comes to me. I forwarded that to Trent, as well as Lorenzo and others and said, we need to make sure that is, is 35 on this? Are they going to yet try to throw another freeway down here? Is it, what are they going to do? I'm looking through, say, somebody needs to go through and what, what's happening? It wasn't immediate. I finally got the, the answer today specifically on 35. So it's been a week or so. But again, I didn't, and I didn't say get it back to me immediately. I just said, let's make sure. This thing is just now coming out. Let's get, be ahead of the curve. So we're not at the end of the. That's an example of one that I wasn't expecting, uh, an overnight. But there are also, people come to me with code enforcement issues. They come to you guys with code enforcement issues. We send that up for code enforcement. And I usually will tell the resident, look, if it's a code enforcement issue, this is not going to be an overnight, an overnight deal. You know, we're not going to go out there and force somebody to mow their grass or do whatever overnight. There is a process by law, not our process, state law, that has to be abide by. So I try to make sure that the resident understands it's not going to be overnight. So, um, it should be interesting to see, you know, when budget time rolls around, you know, what happens on something like this. Mr. Brown?
Obviously I'm new to this conversation, um, clearly. So there, there's a, there's a saying that I like to apply. A good friend of mine taught me years ago that's to be unclear is to be unkind. And so I want to be clear on what I'm hearing. And, and you're pushing this, Mr. Patel. So I'm kind of asking you specifically. Is, it sounds to me like the overall issue is not necessarily access to information, but it's the speed at which you get access to information that, that you may request. So it's a response time issue more than a information availability issue in your perspective. Is that fair?
I would say both.
Okay. Um, so is there, again, new to the, the conversation, is there any type of expectation of response times? Trent, more of a question for you. Is there an expectation of responsiveness? Or is that at this stage in how we do things, a subjective matter to the individual person sitting at the night?
So it's, it's really more subjective to, um, whatever the issue at hand is. The comp, how complicated it is, you know, what, what we have to go look at and research to get the background information. Make sure we're providing all the information, a full holistic response, um, to make sure that, uh, we haven't left anything out.
About my question, not necessarily the answer, but just a response to the question.
Right.
Because, correct, yeah. Depending on what you're asking, it could take weeks, it could take months.
Sure. And I, I think the intention is that, you know, we try to put some time parameters around that and let you know if it's going to take longer, follow up, if it's going to take longer than we expected to, that, hey, we're still working on this. So that there is an understanding of what those time parameters are. You know, I think one of the things that was brought up is the UDC, um, and as, as it relates to, to hotels. And we did do the initial research on that when it was put on the council agenda. We did provide some background on what some other cities are doing and what some of those options are. And then, you know, subsequent to that, in another meeting, there was, it was, it was looked to be put in with the rest of the UDC updates. And, you know, if there's a different direction on that at this point, then we'll take that direction and we'll accelerate that and move that forward. Everything comes at a price. So it also may impact just exactly how fast we can move on the overall UDC update. So, you know, there, there's trade-offs, there's, uh, for, for where we put our time into.
Sure.
And so, you know, we, so, so a lot of those initial research things, we can provide that. We can provide some background, you know, we're not just going to say, no, we're not providing anything. But, you know, there's limitations to that and we do have other things to, to work on. But, you know, the, a- any type of inquiry, we track those. And we get a lot of inquiries from multiple different avenues. You know, we get the council contacts at all of you see. I get texts, I get emails, I get phone calls, um, you know, and, and just coming in from a lot of different avenues. We do track those. We do make sure that we do respond to all those. And, um, you know, maybe we need to do a little bit better or we need to do better on what is that timeframe? We're going to respond to you and, and if we don't hit that, you know, letting you know, hey, it's going to take another day or two.
I guess that was ultimately my question, like normal, just normal course of operations. Would it be, for my edification, if I'm messaging you guys about something, would it be, I haven't heard from you in two days, then I should probably follow up because something was coming up. What does that look like?
Yeah, I think usually you're going to hear from us initially, hey, we're working on it. We got it. Getting it to the right people, try to get your response, um, you know, as opposed to not hearing anything. We want to make that initial response, put some expectations around it.
And I do think y'all, y'all are good at that is responding initially, we got it, we're working on it. But then sometimes.
I, I don't, I mean, I'd like to know what we haven't responded to, to make sure that we are meeting those expectations.
But remember, we're, sometimes when, what we're reaching out about is because we're, we got a question from a resident. And then the resident may not understand it's going to take a week to research it and then.
So you have to set that expectation.
Right. It's, but it, some residents don't want to wait, wait a week. And so it.
Well, you know, Laney, sometimes no is a complete sentence.
I, I know.
You know, it's, and, and we don't want to set false expectations either, you know. Years ago, nobody that's around anymore, I'd get something that said, hey, is street signs down? And turn that in and, and, uh, the street sign would be, you know, it came in from a council member. Street sign would be back up that afternoon. And I go, whoa. You're setting a false expectation there because if, if, you know, Mr., uh, if, if somebody just, a citizen calls in and requests that street sign to be put up, it's going to get put in the queue and it's probably going to be five to seven days. And it does get done as a matter of course. So, you know, it's, uh, we, we, we got to set those expectations as well and just. You know, my expectation is yes, all of the inquiries we get from the council are important. We need to make sure we respond to those, we respond, respond to them fully. But we, you know, we've got, yeah, that same duty to all of our citizens. And so I know and a lot of y'alls are citizen inquiries coming in through y'all. So we treat them the same.
Mayor, I guess I, I would say, you know, we've got three yeses up here. I'm a no. And I guess I'd say Trent's our staff and if he's missing the mark on something, we need to lay into him. And, um, the last review we had was pretty good. And I don't, I, I don't know that we dug into this. So if this is an issue, as council, we need to, to get back there and say, no, we want a response within five hours, 10 hours, five minutes, whatever it is, and communicate that and then hold him to it.
And, and I think it's a communication. And what I'm hearing is it's not, not getting an answer. It's expectation on getting the answer. And so I don't know how we devise a system to do that. Maybe that's part of.
So speaking of that, we, you know, we've been working based on some input from our senior staff on kind of a, a council, uh, staff communication protocol to try to put some more parameters around that, to make sure, you know, we're getting, uh, we're running those through the correct avenues and then making sure we're, you know, getting the proper, the full response back. And so I think as we look at that, we can maybe put some, we, we can look at, um, what the expectations are. Like I said, every issue is typically going to be different, but it's just providing that information on what the expectation there is and then making sure that there's follow-up if, if that deadline is not met.
Very well. Last call. Questions, comments? Saying none, we're going to move forward to adjournment at 8:50.